Ladies and gentlemen, can I please have you take a seat, please?
Are you aware of the presentation?
Yes, that's what it- Mr. Mayor, floor is yours.
All right, guys, before we start this meeting, we have a quick check presentation and that's the end of my participation in this, so Chantel, all yours.
Good morning, thank you, Mayor, good morning, Council. We are here today to receive a grant, well, a partnership agreement with Healthy Blue Louisiana, where we were so fortunate to receive $12,000 in funding for the food bank to further our efforts in food insecurity and serving those throughout the city of Kenner that are, have def- have food shortages. So, we just want to thank Healthy Blue again, it's definitely going to help us to meet the need, and we just are so elated when organizations see what we're doing and they want to help. So, I implore all of you, whoever wants to help, we're right on Oxley Street, don't hesitate to give me a call or stop by. And I'm going to introduce Ms. Skylar with Healthy Blue Louisiana.
Good afternoon, I'm Skylar Williams, and we are so excited to partner with the city on this great initiative. Part of our mission with Healthy Blue is to support healthy members in the healthy community, and to help people to move off of the plan so that they can actually, you know, live a better quality of life. This is Brittany, she is actually the person that facilitated this wonderful partnership.
Hi, everybody, good morning, we are too excited to be here, just to share our check presentation with you guys, and let everyone know how excited we are to partner with the city of Kenner and the food bank. Chantel and I have worked probably about, what, six months possibly to get this all taken care of, so we are excited to move forward and help with the food bank. So, and like she said, if you guys want to be a part of that, please contact her and we'll be more excited, more happy to help you guys, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and like I said, thank you for the donation, and we're going to take
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the Friday morning's meeting on February 21st to order, do we have any special intentions? Don Cian, Ms. McKenney, can you please lead us into prayer?
Yes.
Everyone, please stand.
Please, Governor, this is Don Juan, blessed be your Lord, God, all creation, through you, for your goodness that we have this day, in the carnival season to celebrate one crucial season of hope. We thank you especially for one matter, as we give thanks to your mindful of those who have so much blessed than you, and we share these wonderful years together, we commit ourselves to greater generosity towards those who are blessed. May we bless safety, security, weather, and fellowship among the needy throughout this carnival, amen.
Councilman LaHat?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Claire?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B-14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. Next, we have correspondence, reports from the mayor, CAO, or department heads.
Ms. Mayor, you have the floor.
I had to do some housekeeping because the chief of police wanted to come over here and sit in the finance director's-
For one day.
-one day, so he can raid the, all of our line items, yes. All right, just some, got a couple of comments on some upcoming events here in Kenner, and some comments on things we've been doing. Saturday, February 22nd, tomorrow, Kenner's Annual Black Heritage Festival will take place in Rivertown's Heritage Park, right behind us here, beginning at 1:00 PM and ending at 5:30 PM, it's free of charge. Entertainment is DJ Roe, Wayne James and the Partners Band, and to the delight of some of the ladies in my office, Partners in Crime, have no idea who that is, but they're all excited. Also, the following Saturday, March 1st, Kenner's Annual Kenegraw takes place in Kenner City Park, beginning at 2:00 PM. There'll be food trucks and the band Contra Flow performs from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. 6:00 PM, the Crew of ISIS will start parading and make its way through North Kenner. So, I was guaranteed by Councilwoman McKenney that it's going to be a good parade, so we'll see. Monday, March 3rd, Kenner's Annual Lundegraw Celebration in Rivertown, from 11:00 to 3:00. Consists of the meeting of the Royal Courts of August in Zulu, also the Crew de Kenner Wagon Float Parade will take place that day too, and once again, the entertainment in the parking lot here is the Top Cats. And if anyone wants to, has kids that want to participate in the wagon float parade, you can find all the information on our website, it's a nice little time for the kids to ride in a parade. Also, I'd like to congratulate the fire department on receiving their new Can-Am side-by-side rapid-response vehicle. It made its debut in last week's Crew of Drifflwood Parade. This vehicle allows for a pre-positioned fire vehicle that can quickly respond to incidents around festival grounds, parade grounds, Lake Town, and Rivertown. So, actually, it's a nice little side-by-side outfitted with all kind of fun fire stuff. So, I kind of kidded with them that they need a box of balloons, so as they're riding around, they can, like the forehead grotto clowns, they can make animals out of balloons for childrens. Speaking of the Lake Town area, Wednesday, some of the members, me and some of the members of my staff, along with Councilwoman Bohannon and her staff, met with Louisiana Department of State Lands to discuss the Lake Town amphitheater, and to confirm that they received our permit application. They did, they did say they received it, the Corps received it, the plans for this are pretty much complete, just, you know, the actual structure of what it's going to look like. And hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, once we get a permit, you'll see the site, some dirt being put on the site that's got to sit for several, several months, as it comes down to the, the level that the, it needs to surcharge and preload it, so it doesn't sink after it's built. So, you'll see a large amount of sand, so what it's, what it is now, it's going to be about 22 foot in the air, so it's higher than, probably five foot higher than the levee as it first appears, and then it's just going to settle into the, the, its position. Last year, the council instructed the planning department to conduct a study of the location and permitting process that allow gas stations and vape shops to do business. That analysis is, is complete and was forwarded to the council. As you can see, if there's any, you know, it does have some obstacles about prohibiting vape shops in some of these gas stations, so I say that, so take a look at it, and, you know, it may take legislation to kind of tighten it up, if that's what y'all want to do. In the last meeting, I had several questions about the fire department budget, some comments on responding to that is, the current 24-25 operating fiscal year was budgeted at $7.8 million deficit. That means the general fund put that much money into the fire department's budget. By reducing the transfer, now that we have a millage, you don't have to go into the, this general fund much more than fires budgeted. So, currently, we have two fire apparatus ordered, and the two payments, we have two payments left on the newest apparatus we already received. So, we have two more payments of that, and we have two new fire trucks on order. I do believe one of them is due at the end of this year, and if I'm not mistakenly, shortly after the new year, we should get the second one. And then after this, with this new millage and a rotation is in place, that the oldest unit will be replaced approximately every two to three years, so you constantly have new, newer equipment in the fire department. Over the, let's see, over the next year, the fire department plans on focusing on equipment training. Once everyone is trained on the new equipment that's on the trucks, they can start replacing more stuff. The gear, air packs, and masks have a useful life of 10 years, and we've been setting aside funds every budget cycle to, to cover future costs, now we can do it a little bit sooner than later. Station 38, which is the Duke Street Fire Station, is currently under construction, and Station 35, which is the old City Hall Fire Station, will be moved to 24th Street, 24th and Williams, and that planning is underway. I don't know exactly, I know the fire chief and his administration have been meeting with the architects to come up with the design and plan, and in true Terrence form, he's haggling already with the, the cost per, per square foot, so if there's one thing I've learned about the fire chief is, he does not like to spend money, so. All right, now that the pay plan is in effect, we have a better idea of the true costs and able to allocate funds for their capital needs. As you know, the millage was passed, there's never going to be enough to do everything at one time. We prioritize the employees in getting a pay, pay plan in place, and we'll continue working to make the equipment replaced as needed. The millage is completely dedicated to the fire department, meaning anything that we do not spend goes back into next year's capital for the fire department, so it does not come away from the fire department. That's the fire, the millage fund, so the, the savings from our general fund is pretty much going, is going to be their capital, you know, for the, for the next couple of years, until we up and running and kind of have a better plan, and some of this heavy equipment that costs, I think the next truck they need is $1.4 million today's cost, so who knows when we order it 12 months from now, what's it going to cost then, so. It'll take several years to catch up and get them squared, but once this plan is in place, they'll have a pretty good rotation of, you know, what you're going to spend every, you know, every two years or every, every budget on capital, because they by far have the biggest capital, you know, other than our wastewater, who needs a lot of big-ticket items also. And with that, I hope that comment was longer than this whole council meeting, so that's it, buddy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ma'am?
Next, we have resolutions, motions, and other items from the floor. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to amend the agenda to add Item 16I, an ordinance approving the use of estate contract for the purchase of bleachers at Musburger Lino Stadium. All councilmen, is there anyone in the audience wishing to obdurate to us amending the agenda? Please come forward. Seeing none, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Under the consent agenda, we have Item 1, approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of February 6, 2025. Item 2 is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. Item 2A is a resolution granting an alcoholic beverage permit to Discovery Health Sciences Foundation on April 12, 2025, of the Swamp Owl Bayou Jam at 3837 Loyola Drive in Kenner, Louisiana. Item 3 is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item 3A is application 2444-25, Divine Mercy Roman Catholic Church, to hold a public gathering on March 29, 2025, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, for the purpose of a church and school fundraiser at 4337 Salantini Parkway in Kenner, Louisiana. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to approve the consent agenda. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Under the public appearance agenda, we have Item 8, public hearings and final passage, we have none. Item 9 is ordinances for the sale, purchase, transfer, lease, and alienation of immovable property, we have none. Item 10 is opening of bids, we have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage, we have none. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage. Item 12A is summary ordinance number 13,738, an ordinance declaring four ceramic kilns and various molds as surplus and authorizing its donation to Jefferson Parish. I have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember Dunn, to remove this item at the request of the administration. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0 to remove the item. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by councilmembers. Item 13A is a resolution authorizing the mayor to extend the state of emergency in the city of Kenner for the hurricane-free and seeing emergency situation for the Department of Emergency Management. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Dunn. Councilman Wilmot?
Well, as you know, the, with the state law change, that, for these to continue after, I think it's 90 days, up to 90 days, council approval is needed. I think the state and the parish, theirs expires March 5th, I think I was told, so we'll see where it's at, if, if, if they, put, expect them to continue theirs also, it's just tying up the paperwork, these things. We have two or three of them that are still open, Ida is going to be the longest one, because it's just so much damage and paperwork, that that's going to be extended a, a pretty long time. These are going to be much shorter, but with the, the law change, this is why it has to come in front of a council. Instead of just, before, it was just, I sign off on it, they, they register it, and it carries on. So, the law was changed, where now it needs council approval every three months, and that's it.
All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda, we have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 13,734, an ordinance approving amendment number 1 to the agreement with Arco Company Services Incorporated to perform load bank testing and preventative maintenance on various generators throughout the city of Kenner, to increase the agreement amount by $150,000, for a total not to exceed amount of $450,000 for the General Services Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 13,735, an ordinance approving an agreement with HNO Investments LLC to provide grass-cutting services citywide, in an amount not to exceed $45,000 for the Public Works Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember LaHat. Councilman Dunn?
Yeah, I have a question on this, on this particular contract. I know that we are renewing this with HNO, but I want to know, is this also with the ditches in District 1? Can anybody answer that? Or it's just a contract?
Well, this was, we, several months back, y'all approved a, it was a, I guess, the low bidder for grass cutting that was out of the Thibodeaux area, and they, after several attempts, they pretty much said they can't handle it, and backed out, so this is kind of an emergency, I guess, to, to the gap, and I think Jose is going to rebid it in the near future.
This is just a temporary agreement that we're going to be entering with, with HNO, okay, while we bid a new contract.
Okay.
The, the mayor is correct, we did bid it a while back, we had a contract with AMR LLC out of Thibodeaux, and I think they went through the process of doing one cut, and that's when we received a letter saying that they could not go any further with the contract on the counter, I guess that they were going to lose money on the contract, so that put us in a bind, and we had to do an emergency contract, we're doing an emergency contract with HNO, the same contractor that had been cutting grass for the city for many years, and this, this emergency contract is going to remain in place while we bid the other one, a, a brand-new one, and we enter into a contract with the new company.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15C is summary ordinance number 13,736, an ordinance approving an agreement with Gulf South Engineering and Testing Incorporated to provide testing services associated with the 42nd and Lake Trail and 31st and Loyola Sewer Lift Station Improvements Project, in an amount not to exceed $10,000 for the Department of Wastewater. I have a motion by Councilmember LaHat, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15D is summary ordinance number 13,737, an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Monopoly Rental Properties, to provide soft starts and VFDs on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid 24-6858, in an amount not to exceed $200,000 for the Department of Wastewater. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Branigan. Councilman Wilmot?
Yes, is Ms. Joanne here? If you will, just give us an explanation on this one, specifically what soft starts are and VFDs, just for the record, thank you.
Okay, soft starts and variable frequency drives, VFDs, are electrical components that controls how the motors run, so we have these at several of our high horsepower stations, so that the motors don't come on full blast, that it'll come on gradually, and then get to a level and stay at a level, then ramp up and down, that it doesn't ramp up all the waste speed, so it helps the motors to last longer and helps with a better pump operation.
Thank you for that explanation, that's perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
All councilmembers in favor, please-
I, I just wanted to know, Ms. Masonic, do we pay them with cash or Monopoly money?
Monop- we haven't paid them yet, so we'll- Monop, we haven't paid them yet, so we'll see.
And maybe one of those big checks? Okay, I had to get a joke in, come on.
All Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 16 is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item 16A is an ordinance authorizing a public hearing and approving the proposed Section 108 application in the amount of $2,080,445 to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for the reconstruction of the Arthur P. Clay Resource Center for the Community Development Department. Item 16B is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of six Applied Information Field Monitoring Units, FMU, preempt priority systems from Temple Incorporated in the amount of $36,786 for the Kenner Fire Department. Item 16C is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of 552 DARE t-shirts, including shipping, at a cost of $4,451.20 from Creative Product Sourcing Incorporated, a sole-source provider for the Kenner Police Department. Item 16D is an ordinance approving amendment number one to the agreement with Beverly Construction Company LLC to supply batched dirt and sand, increasing the agreement by $300,000 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $400,000 annually for the Department of Public Works. Item 16E is an ordinance approving an agreement with Lenfield Hunter and Junius Incorporated for professional engineering services on an as-needed basis in an amount not to exceed $75,000 for the Department of Public Works. Item 16F is an ordinance ratifying the emergency rental of one Baldor 500 KW generator for the 35th and Ole Miss Lift Station by Arco Company Services Incorporated in the amount of $32,500 for the wastewater department. Item 16G is an ordinance ratifying an emergency repair of the odor control unit at the 39th and Arkansas Sewer Lift Station Plant by Jones Bell LLC, doing business as ECS Environmental Solutions, in the amount of $6,927 for the wastewater department. Item 16H is an ordinance ratifying the emergency repair of the Baldor Digestor Airator 4A and 4B located at the wastewater treatment plant by Precision PSI LLC, a sole-source provider, in an amount of $18,491.24 for the wastewater department. Item 16I is an ordinance approving the use of a state contract for the purchase of bleachers at Musburgerlino Stadium. Item 17 is reports from the council and our special committees. Councilman Branigan?
Oh, yes. I'm, I'm really tired of the trash that we see on our medians, people emptying ashtrays out of their cars at the intersections. And so, I talked to Chief Conley, and I talked to Constable Ural about this. And what I would like to see happen is, if you are in line, you know, at the red light, person throws an ashtray full of ashes and butts out, or you see someone throwing trash out of the window of their car onto our medians, I would like, if you can, without getting in a wreck, if you can take a picture of the back of the car, we have the license plate, and then, we can try and do something about it. Because I'm, I'm just tired. I, I mean, I'll go pick up branches and stuff like that from storms, but I don't think that the city of Kenner should be made service for people that feel like chunking stuff out the window of a car. So, Chief, Chief Conley, could you say that, I, I mean, I'm not trying to do anything illegal, but, you know, if you could give me some info on it?
Yeah, no, so I appreciate you, when you called last week, and we had a meeting with the constable, because I know there was a litter program through Justice's Peace Court at one time, that, you know, I'll reach out to Judge Centany and see what the status of that is. But certainly, you know, I think it's a good idea. We will set up an email address, if people just wanna send the, the photographs to an email address within the department, because, you know, we do take blight serious, and we do what we can with our manpower to fight blight. And of course, this, that's the, that's the nexus of blight, of trash and litter, and people that have no regard for our city. So, I'm happy to work with your office and the constable's office to further that effort and to, to get that, to get the boots on the ground and handle that.
Okay, all right, well, thanks, Chief. And if you're a resident and you see this, my cell phone number's out there, I'm sure you could text the picture to any of the council people up here, and they will be willing to forward it to that email address, so that we can, you know, try and get our city cleaned up. It is totally ridiculous. I'm driving down Chateau Boulevard, and there's a six-pack of beer bottles that somebody just throws out on the median, and it drives me crazy. So, we get this thing rolling, and I assume that, I don't know what the logistics are, but y'all would pay a visit to them, or send them a letter, or something to...
Yeah, we do a follow-up, we, we'll have somebody do a follow-up investigation based on the information that we have.
Okay, so, when, when a person takes the picture, if you could just say, this person, you know, if you email, text it or email it, say that you're on the corner of Williams and West Sussmanade, this person emptied their ashtray at the intersection, snap the picture, send it in, and we, I will make sure that any sent to me are sent to the email address that they need to go to, trying to clean up the city. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Councilman McKenney?
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate the mayor's invitation to the Crew of ISIS Parade, which is gonna be next Saturday. It's gonna, we have a great, we have a great theme, we're gonna be celebrating ISIS Goes on a Field Trip. So, it's gonna be about all different places on, throughout the city. We are, I'm on the, the last float, and we're going to cooking school, so look for us in red wigs. It's gonna be a blast, and hopefully, it'll be warm, as opposed to the next three days. So, come out and have fun, and don't litter. Thanks, have a good day.
Councilman Wilmot?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just wanted to, to ask, I know I had gotten probably two or three calls regarding the changes at 1001 Williams Boulevard, which is Kenner City Hall's address. Of course, we have some demolishing that took place of a couple of buildings and, and, but if we could, for the next meeting, I, I noticed Ms. Herring is not here today, but if we could have possibly some type of status report for next meeting, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll have it, and she's riding in Cleopatra today, so anybody going to a parade in New Orleans, just yell Elizabeth. Yes, but we'll have it, we'll, we'll give you the status of how we got to this point and what's going on. You'll see some, the plans, oh, we have some, some town hall meetings for the redevelopment of it, for everybody's input.
Perfect.
But we'll give you an update.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Lahat?
Just wanted to thank again the men and women of the Police Department, the Fire Department, General Services, and everyone else in the city who supports the Driftwood Parade every year. It's very well done. Everybody comments on how almost seamless it is at this point, but it's also a lot of volunteer organization by the Driftwood Civic Association, Christine Ross, Matt Dupree, Tim McCaffrey, Frank Catalin, I don't know, a lot of people, I'd list, but y'all do a great job. The city really supports this neighborhood every year. It's been going on 55 years, and everyone in the, in the area really does love it, and especially with the grammar schools, who get to participate in the parade, which is two miles. So, it's a, it's a great tradition, and I just wanna thank y'all, both of you chiefs, for helping out and having your staff there. And we do feed y'all every year, so I'm hoping y'all like the, the Italian pie. And Italian Pie donated the food, so the original Italian Pie on Williams, they donated the food for the parade and fed everyone, and did a marvelous job. Thank you all again.
Councilwoman Dunn?
Thank you, Council President. I wanna thank everyone also for coming out to the rescheduling of the MLK ceremony. Of course, we didn't do the march, but we did do the ceremony, it was well-attended. We had an awesome time, and I, I thank the city for stepping in at the, you know, at the beginning to make sure everything was set up properly. And I would like to thank the residents of, of, of the city that attended the council, that also attended the event. So, I just wanna say, thank you.
Last, I'd like to say, I had a fantastic time at the MLK meeting, it was, it was great. Also, another thing that I need to say, something like Councilman Wilmot, Williams Boulevard, it's a state highway, and we have little to no say over what goes on in Williams. We can bark, but we have no bite. The traffic signals at Williams and Betts finally have been approved for continuance, so it should start hanging lights here shortly, I'm hoping, at that intersection. And I believe the, or at least hoping that the installation of those lights will be done at night and not during the day, so we don't have a huge traffic impact. We've been given excuses after excuses on why the right-hand lane, on the turning lane in front of Exxon station there. 90-day project's taken 180 days and more. Nothing that we can do about it, DOTD project, and we're under their mercy, more or less. So, please, everyone, frustrations out there, especially during the Super Bowl, we had extra traffic, now we got more to grow, extra traffic. Please use caution, always be watchful for emergency vehicles, and please be understanding we have little to no say on what's going on on Williams Boulevard. Thank you.
Item 18 is new business. We have none. Item 19 is unfinished business, and our motions to reconsider or remove from the table position, we have none. Item 20 is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Mr. Gregg, you have the podium?
Greg Taft, 5th District. Mayor Glazer, I'd like to thank you for that report, cuz I think it's gonna, it was, it's helpful for everyone to know what's gonna happen, at least I got an idea now what's gonna happen in the next five years, and hopefully, you know, we'll, we'll start moving everything ahead and put Kenner in a good light for everything. The only thing I, I wanna bring, and I appreciate what Councilman Branigan brought up, but it's, it's not just ash, ashes going on the medians. You've got people that throw trash on the medium, cuz, cuz we've had, have the city come by a couple of times to pick up trash on the medium, because they just dump it. They, I guess they don't have any consideration for the, the area. So, it's, it's a problem everywhere. The other thing, though, I wanna also bring up is that, in the next, or do we have a, a idea on the waste, upgrading the, our waste area, you know, the equipment and what have you? Do we have an idea about how long that program is gonna take before we will actually see where our sewage and everything is actually running the way it should be? Cuz, you know, I do see trucks coming out and still pumping out the sewer systems, which is good, but I know we're in the process of operating, I just don't know our timeframe when we see that we're gonna see the end, because previous administrations have not dealt with it. That's why we're in the mess we're in now. And I just wanna make sure our tax dollars doesn't continue to just, and, and, you know, repair and never fix the issue. That's, that's the only thing. And then, I wanna also ask, and I know it's a silly question, but if we take, if a citizen takes a picture of Waste Pro or Remali missing the trash going into the truck, and we take a picture of that, we can go after them as well. I just, cuz that is another problem that we have in some of the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Mr. Gregg, the clarifiers are being reconstructed as we speak right now. So, that is one of the big things that would increase, be able to increase the volume. And I'm sure Ms. Joanne could give us a little bit better fixture on next meeting, okay? Is there anyone else? Meeting adjourned.